Good evening and welcome to our special meeting today. Special meeting, regular session. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:05. May I please have roll call?
Councilmember Roscoe?
Present.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Condon? Mayor Pro Tem White?
Here.
Mayor Lara?
Here.
At this time, we will open up for public comment at 6:05.
Our first speaker, Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I've given our new city manager, Mr. Parton, a stack of public record requests. You're all very aware of them. Been asking for two years to this bunch, as for the previous two years to the other bunch of crooks. So, it's time to get me my public records. The city's inability to maintain public records proves to the state and feds that the same corrupt practices are continuing in the city of Beaumont. Council has made no attempt to acquire replacements for the city clerk and city treasurer positions because operating the city is not the business of this staff and council. We will have a former treasurer and city clerk sitting on the council now. Let's see if they are willing and want to convince one of the other three that didn't care about transparency to follow the California Public Records Act. That's your first test. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. No further speakers, Mayor.
So, I'll go ahead and close public comment on regular session at 6:07. And as a special request, we'll go ahead and open public comment at closed session. And then for anybody who's not here, I'll go ahead and open it again at later time. So, I will open public comment for closed session at 6:07.
Speaker Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. The city of -- this is regarding number five, the tolling agreement with Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks and Rec. The city of Beaumont owes the Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks and Recreation District $12 million in mitigation fees collected for regional parks, period. There is no reason to sign a tolling agreement, pay lawyers on both sides with taxpayer money when the results will be the same. The city owes the district $12 million. Beaumont's corrupt staff made an illegal deal with Mickey Valdivia, but that doesn't make the deal any less illegal. I'm sending a packet of documents to the Parks and Recs lawyers at Best Bestin Krieger showing this staff and council's past and present illegal activity. And I see that Pinkney has his name as a lawyer representing Beaumont because his legal expertise has been so valuable in the past. What is the limit set by council on legal fees to drag this out? Can mitigation fees collected for infrastructure such as fire stations and regional parks be used to pay lawyers and consultants to continue illegal activity? No, that would be a misuse of funds, and an honest attorney would tell his council the truth. But the truth isn't what this council has wanted to hear.
Thank you for your comment.
Have any other speakers on closed session?
No further speakers, Mayor.
And I'll close closed session public comment at 6:09.
Do you like to do pledge at this time, Mayor?
Yes. May I please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we have some announcements or proclamations? No? Okay, so we will present plaques to the outgoing council.
Do -- public statement from council?
Yes. We'll have a public statement from an outgoing council member?
Which would be me.
From council members.
Thank you, Mayor Lara. First of all, I moved to the city of Beaumont, my husband and I did, because we liked it, and we still like it and still enjoy it. Secondly, I would like to congratulate our new council members. You know, it's good to have an infusion of new energy, new eyes, true passion for city government. And it's really, I've said this before, it's exciting to win a city council seat. But with it goes a lot of responsibility. And I wish you well and wish you to succeed in your council seats, wholeheartedly. I've lived in the city of Beaumont for about 12 years, so those of you that don't know me, I've been on the council four years. That's not very long for council people. To my mom and dad, celebrating their 64th wedding anniversary. Thank you for watching and being consistent. They know all of the players here, and I've appreciated their love and support for many Things, you know, we've kind of lost our positive in our community, and I do hope that that comes back and that, you know, we see what we really have. Things that are forgotten, a few highlights from when I first came on. We celebrated the centennial, 100-year celebration. It was wonderful. My big interaction has been our own transit plus Riverside Transit Agency. We've moved a lot of things forward there, and it's been one -- it's been really, really good to see that go. I had the unique experience of interacting with a contingent from Kabul, Afghanistan. They came to see how we -- how our infrastructure in our city was done. Just another quick thing, we received a Cool Planet Award from Southern California Edison Climate Issues. And we, over the years, the city, this has been a repeated thing. We lost our grant writer, and it would be nice to bring back those incentives where we get monies back from -- for doing the things we're doing. So, and then on a most difficult note, the death of Councilmember Fox greatly impacted us all. It was tough. And I still have a voice message on my phone from him the day before he died. Most endearing to me is our city staff. We've got some really good consultants, new attorney, new city manager. You know, our dedicated employees who do the true hard work, the hard lifting, and this most definitely includes our POA. We are so fortunate to have a hometown PD. That is really very special because a lot of cities just can't maintain their PDs. Now, I have had numerous inquiries as why I didn't run for office again. Quite frankly, I'm tired out and looking forward to retiring. And I do thank those that have reached out to me with their thoughts of goodwill and good things. And I have to share with you a note from a dear friend that I got and knows my love of horses riding. And he said, "Hell of a ride, girl." And I have to say, that pretty much sums it up for all of us during this stressful last few years. But I really want to thank Mayor Lara the last year for him just stepping up and kicking in. And it's hard. It's hard when you've only been on for a year to take on the mayorship. And I know what that's like. And each of my council members, council, the council buddies that we have, we truly, we've been through war together in the sense of trying our very, very best to make the right decisions for our community. And we went around and around, and we agonized over issues that were tough, and we made some tough decisions. And so, it's taken everyone, all of us, our new council members in your jobs, capacities. So, as outgoing, from my heart to yours, I wish our council and staff and our all and all our beautiful city, all good things ahead in 2017.
Thank you, Councilmember Knight. Councilmember Knight, I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the city for your dedication. You made it look easy. You've been very supportive of me when I was at Mayor Pro Tem. You worked well with our staff. You worked well with council. We have all worked to head in the same direction. And it takes a special person to do this and hold their head high and know that they're doing what they can for the benefit of the city and its citizens. And for that and the effort that you put in, I thank you and want to present you with this plaque on behalf of the city. Councilmember Knight, thank you for your service, serving on the city council from 2013 to 2016. Thank you.
Now, am I excused? Am I excused?
No.
I tried.
That brings us to action items. Agenda or action item number two, adopt a resolution declaring the result of the November 8, 2016 election. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution reciting the fact that the general municipal election held in said city on November 8, 2016, declaring the result thereof and such other matters as are provided by law.
I'll second that motion. So, the motion by Mayor Lara, second by Councilmember Roscoe, to adopt the resolution. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes. Now, you may officially step down.
I may officially step down. Here's to retirement.
And that brings us to item three, swearing in of new council members. So, I want you to repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Julio Martinez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I do further swear or affirm that I do not advocate?
And I do further swear or affirm that I do not advocate?
Nor am I a member of any party or organization?
Nor am I a member of any party or organization?
Political or otherwise?
Political or otherwise?
That now advocates the overthrow of the government?
That now advocates the overthrow of the government?
Of the United States or the State of California?
Of the United States or of the State of California.
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
Or other unlawful means?
Or other unlawful -- or other unlawful means?
That within the five years immediately preceding the taking of this oath?
That within the five years immediately preceding the taking of this oath?
I have not been a member of any party or organization?
I have not been a member of any party or organization?
Political or otherwise?
Political or otherwise?
That advocated the overthrow of the government of the United States?
That advocated the overthrow of the government of the United States?
Or the State of California?
Or the State of California.
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
Or any unlawful means?
Or any unlawful means?
And that during the time, during such time as I hold the position of city councilman?
And that during such time as I hold the position of city councilman?
I will not advocate nor become a member of any party or organization?
I will not advocate nor become a member of any party or organization?
Political or otherwise?
Political or otherwise?
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States?
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States?
Or the State of California?
Or the State of California?
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
Or other unlawful means?
Or other unlawful means?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are my next pick. You had a memory, I'm sure. Well, they don't do this for folks that...
It must be bigger than Baldwin.
A lot bigger. Aye? State your name.
Aye, Nancy Carroll.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
And I do further swear?
And I do further swear?
That I do not advocate?
That I do not advocate?
Nor am I a member of any party or organization?
Nor am I a member of any party or organization?
Political or otherwise?
Political or otherwise?
That now advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States?
That now advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States?
Or the State of California?
Or of the State of California?
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
Or other unlawful means?
Or other unlawful means?
That within five years immediately preceding the taking of this oath?
That within the five years immediately preceding the taking of this oath?
I have not been a member of any party or organization?
I have not been a member of any party or organization?
Political or otherwise?
Political or otherwise?
That advocated the overthrow of the government?
That advocated the overthrow of the government?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
Or the State of California?
Or the State of California?
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
Or other unlawful means?
Or other unlawful means?
And that during such time as I hold the position of a city councilman?
And that during such time as I hold the position of a city council member?
I will not advocate nor become?
I will not advocate nor become?
A member of any party or organization?
A member of any party or organization?
Political or otherwise?
Political or otherwise?
That advocates the overthrow of the government?
That advocates the overthrow of the government?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
Or the State of California?
Or the State of California?
By force or violence?
By force or violence?
Or other unlawful means?
Or other unlawful means?
Good to hear.
Signature person taking the oath, that would be me, correct? Okay. Okay, so I'm just going to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we tried to get you, but... Okay, with that, that brings us to action item number four, reorganization of the Beaumont City Council. So, at this point, what we'll do is we will entertain a motion for the office of mayor first, and then once that has been determined, we will determine the, or consider nominations or entertain nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem. And then finally authorize the mayor to make appointments to the various boards, commissions, and committees. Okay? Before we do that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to explain so it's clear how the process, I'll go ahead and take into record all the nominations for mayor, and then we'll vote on that. And then I'll take in record all the nominations for Mayor Pro Tem, and then vote on that.
Okay. And then just very quickly, before we get started on this, I would just like to thank the city staff for their efforts and support during my tenure as mayor. I'd like to thank Elizabeth for her support as interim city manager, Carrie for her support in helping keep me on track with different responsibilities. The city staff is extremely resilient and very dedicated to serving the public and its citizens. And Nicole, your organization is exemplary. And it also, during this last year, has been very difficult, a very tenuous time for the city, and we've worked, as council members, have worked very diligently to get this city moving in the right direction. One of the individuals that was very supportive and very helpful for me was our city attorney, John Pinkney. I can't thank him enough for his professionalism and his dedication to our city. And with that, we'll go ahead and I'd like to entertain a nomination for Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, for mayor, Councilmember White, who's been Mayor Pro Tem, very supportive of my position as mayor, very dedicated to this city, and somebody I could bounce ideas off of and has been very supportive over this past year.
I'll second that. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Roscoe, mayor. Councilmember Roscoe's also been on the, on the council and has been a, I agree with his, his forward and his direction. And if you remember back when I was first city clerk, I supported him at that time, and I'd like to nominate him as well.
Thank you. I accept. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, so I'll start with the first one. I'll do a roll call for nomination of Lloyd White for mayor. Councilmember Roscoe?
No.
Councilmember Nancy Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor Lara?
Yes.
And Councilmember White?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem White. And Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Okay, that does not get majority. Oh, I'm sorry.
Three, two.
Three, two. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm new at this. Okay, so, on to Mayor Pro Tem nominations.
Okay. So, at this point, we will consider entertaining nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Nancy Carroll as Mayor Pro Tem.
I will second.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Roscoe for Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed the first nomination.
First nomination was Nancy Carroll?
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, did I miss the nomination for mayor? It was a majority of no for, no, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, we'll do a roll call for Nancy Carroll was the first nomination?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Roscoe?
No.
Nancy Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
And Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember Martinez?
No.
So, that has a majority win for Nancy as Mayor Pro Tem. You can choose to reorganize your seats before you reorganize for all of the committees.
Okay. I think we should do that. So, can you, can you start the music and then stop the music?
Okay, so we move on to item number 4 dot 3, authorize the mayor to make appointments. What I'd like to suggest is, we all have a list here, if with the consensus of the rest of the council, I'd like to get you to give me a list of the, of the councils that you, I'm sorry, the committees that you would like to serve on, once it fits your schedule. There is a scheduling mistake on one of these. The RCTC meetings are not the first Monday of the month, they're the, the second Wednesday, and they're at 9:30. And along with that, right now, the Beaumont representative also sits on the audit and finance committee, or the finance committee for Riverside RCTC. And that, I believe, is the fourth Monday of each month, and that's also at 9:30. It's not listed on here. But, and...
Would you just repeat that?
Sure. RCTC is Wednesday, the second Wednesday?
Right.
At 9:30. And the finance committee is the fourth Monday?
Okay.
At 9:30. So, if you guys are okay with it, I'd rather not make the assignments to... So, if you guys are okay with it, I'd rather not make the, um, the assignments tonight. I'd like to get your authorization to collect which committees you, you folks would like to sit on, which ones fit with your schedule. I, um, my first year here with Erika Board, I didn't realize where and when, so I think it's important that I give you guys some time to do that, and I think we can go through with the assignments on the 20th, if you guys are all good with that. Is that okay?
I'm good with that.
I'm fine with it.
So, before we adjourn to closed session, we were going to reopen public comments if there was anyone who had...
Mayor, do we need to make a motion to table that?
Table?
This is an action item.
Um, mine as well.
So, I'll make a motion that we reorganize this Beaumont City Council on the December 20th meeting.
For the appointments to committees.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Martinez and a second by Councilmember Lara to table the item until the December 20th meeting. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
And Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Lara?
Yes.
If I have that right.
You'll get it. You'll get it. It's Mayor Pro Tem Carroll, Councilmember Lara. It's all right.
I'm sorry.
You've got a year to get it down, all right? You're doing great.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do we have anyone to speak on the closed session items?
No, there's no speakers.
Okay. So, at that time, we'll adjourn to closed session. I'll reopen the regular session and get a report from closed session from city manager.
Executive session, no action was taken. There was a discussion with regard to legal options as it pertains to the tolling agreement that we have presented before you tonight with the Recreation and Parks District.
Okay.
Right, this tolling agreement is being presented to you. The city had been presented with various claims from the Buffalo, I'm sorry, Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Parks District earlier this year.
Is this the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, let's hold off for a second on that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so I guess we need to do a roll call.
Okay.
Bills?
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here. Okay, so now the staff report on item number five.
I won't restate that, but, but this agreement, if approved, would provide an additional six months to be able to visit with representatives of the district to look in, investigate those claims that were there, to look if we could try to address those. So, again, the claims had been submitted to council earlier this year. They do have a deadline at this point of January 3rd, 2017, to be able to pursue their claims. So, this would give an additional six months' time to be able to work with them to see if we can address that.
Are there any questions from council for staff? And anyone asked to speak on this?
No public speakers.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the tolling agreement with Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Martinez and a second by Councilmember Lara. I'll do roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.